Yeah.
Was it a place you built for two?
Yes.
Oh, there it is.
But it's it's a side by side seat.
Hello.
Hello.
The rain.
Not one on.
How do we?
I don't know how to do it on the screen. I always have to, so.
About money and then we're going back here.
I think everyone should be coming in.
Okay.
Nice. Yeah, we were there. There's a castle in old or in cloud.
It wasn't cold when we went to the graduations and states was like ten o'clock in the morning and it was like seven.
Was that presuming?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that night.
Pork and murder.
Probably not high school. I don't know what the name of it is. Something something nice.
So people, I think people just come in normally.
But.
What's that?
People, you have to like let people in. It's just coming out of there.
Oh, nice.
So you won't you won't have to do it.
Yeah, well, I see them up here at all.
Uh.
Or no.
It's not when you're first, I think.
And then how will I know if they have a question? They'll just speak about it.
Yeah, you yeah, they speak, they're going to do that.
Quick follow up. Really?
Better point in this direction so we can see them, right?
That's funny.
Yeah, it was nice. Very nice. Okay.
And then we need. You know what? Uh, I don't think there's other port for this. Can we just say something? Oh, is there one?
The hardest work for me that I've ever.
That's right. Yeah. I'm able to. Okay. Now.
Oh, great.
What I really want to see. The people down here.
In the news.
I just agree that.
And then expect you to get to do it.
You just were teasing people?
Yeah.
That's important.
Yeah, so.
That's.
But I think it just has to be on this green light.
For a hot.
Then we can't.
Hopefully.
Hey, how are you?
Good. I couldn't find it. I couldn't. I wanted to be here just in case.
My students.
We don't need to preview. We don't need that. We just, what I'd like is my presentation up here.
And try again?
Take husband.
There we go. That's it.
I did.
I just put those.
Thank you.
First time he came in.
This was mentioned.
Okay.
Didn't know how to motivate him.
Of it, you're good. So no one has joined. No one has joined.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're expecting to see your line where.
About a year later.
And it's Chris and Tina and she had it in the mall.
All for none of them to be here and pass me through. So we're sure.
Yeah, this is the only people in it right now, which is us.
We confirm they have the right zoom. I'm just. Could they have gone to a Google meets?
Um, they would do some.
They could have for. It's just the five out of five are not here.
And then there was the they prefer everybody. So they might be in the. I'm gonna stay. It was first. Yeah.
The unions.
Also.
Do you need this open?
Initiative zooms.
Yeah. Yeah.
Apparently.
Ah, okay, there you go. Chris Suarez just joined. So it's there. So Chris knows it's here. What we're wondering is if. How could we check?
Yeah.
I'm gonna.
See if they're in Google.
It's hard.
Yeah.
I'm wondering.
Hey.
What do you call that?
Over.
Shannon. He always wanted this to be one of our.
Oh, we had someone join.
Actually.
Okay, I think they got her.
That would be one thing to do because he he always came to say.
Said actually no.
I thought that'd be much like that.
And instead of if we did, like when we.
And that's Chris, right?
Oh.
Oh, you know.
Here, Christmas in to the.
It's less time.
Well, you want to stop.
Yeah, it's it's that Google meet evolves and then unless you.
Should we just leave it on Saturday night? Yeah, but next time.
I'm sitting my salad.
Uh, hey, yeah, Steve's gonna have his next. Oh, yeah, let me come back. Request a appointment today. Okay.
I know.
Then it'll be actually walkable.
Yeah.
So we have Dr. Pete's in.
Yeah, they should be joining.
And who is this phone number?
He's invited. He was brought down. It's not.
Thirty seven, twenty, thirty seven, forty four.
That would be Miss Norton.
That's Tina Norton. Okay.
And then Ken.
Morning, Chris.
Ken's going to join in a minute.
Good morning.
Okay. Good morning, Dr. Pete.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Morning, Tina.
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Tina, can you hear us?
Morning.
Yeah, hear you well.
Uh, she just sent an email. Uh, she needs to join.
You can hear us, Tina? Okay.
So, um.
Kenneth, good morning.
She said she's in the Google meet. I don't see her.
Kenneth, can you say something so we know if you're there?
You can hear me?
Thanks. Oh, there you are. We can hear you now.
That's okay. Thank you.
So now you they'll come out the TV. Oh, actually, you're.
And Doc Rankin's switching over.
I didn't see her. I just emailed her. She said she's in the Google meet, but I don't see her. So. So she's, uh, I told her the Zoom link was at the bottom of the screen.
So Kurt, how'd you get Wrangler to teach about money?
But.
Right. How did you get Wrangler to teach you what?
About money. Always used to know how to.
Well, you sure you like it?
It's handed with a pressure.
July one.
Oh, my gosh.
July one.
Take any chance.
You said that every day.
I got everything under my ass. The therapy thing.
When I spilled into banks.
I should, well, I mean. So.
Oh, my.
Yeah, the.
Okay, we're about ready to get started. Can this? Get smaller or out of the way altogether? So I I really prefer to see the people that are.
Okay, I just separately said Cindy does Zoom link.
Uh huh.
She was in the Google. So she should have left the Google by now and heading into Zoom.
Okay.
You still need to have this.
That has to.
Yes, I use to use this side event too.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, is there a denomination you prefer? Google Meet versus Zoom?
Well, I personally like Zoom, but.
Zoom.
Zoom.
Yeah, the the challenge is Wayne, that when you send a set up a calendar invite, it often assigns a Google meet automatically. And so if you're also doing a Zoom, you need to go back and eliminate, remove the Google link. Um, but that's an extra step, but it's just because of how our Google Calendar works. It it wants to always default and send a Google meet link. And you have to actually take an extra step to remove it. So, but we all like Zoom, I think, a lot better. It has more capabilities than Google Meet. For sure.
Okay, so it's just a dementia check for me to make sure that I'm aware and on board and doing the right steps then.
Well, good. We're happy to report that you do not have dementia.
Oh. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask for that in writing for my my family, okay?
How's that grandson Noah doing?
Uh, you know, he's doing very well for a preemie. Uh, he had a rough go in the beginning and, uh, but he's he's catching up on the weight and so thanks for asking.
That's good news.
We see if Cindy is Cindy. Have you joined?
Yep, I'm here.
Yay, welcome. Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good morning, everyone, and glad that you're all here and we can have some time together. So, um, on Zoom, we have Dr. Pete, Dr. Rankin, Tina Norton, and Kenneth McGovern, and Chris Suarez.
And Chris.
And Chris Suarez. Did I miss anybody? Okay, we've got a really nice speaker. Thank you to our IT folks who came and got this all set up. So I I think you're gonna be able to hear us and we'll be able to hear you. So at any point, just chime in with questions. If they're easy questions, I might field it. If it's a hard question, I'm simply gonna have Patty and Kathy take it. So anyway.
And Kenneth is on.
And Kenneth is here. That's right.
Well.
That's right. And he's home not feeling well, so hope to get better.
Thank you. And thank you for stepping in while you were already gonna present, so.
Okay, so one of the goals, I think, was that there was a desire in the part of the board to really more fully understand how it works on the satellite side of things. And so today is really a look at um, satellite enrollment, satellite funding. By necessity, because we're comparing and contrasting, you'll see some central as well. Just to give you an idea of how it's different here than there, et cetera. Um, but we're gonna take a a look at the different sources of funding. And I have never served as a CT director, so I'm not an expert on this. So Brenda, just chime in. Patty, Kathy, you've all been CT directors. You know way more about this than I do, so feel free to chime in at any point. Um, there's really three major sources of funding for our satellites. And so they receive federal funding called Perkins. Uh, Carl Perkins is the original author of the legislation, a senator from Kentucky, maybe.
I think it was. Yeah. Yeah, not the singer.
Not the singer Carl Perkins.
I believe they are related.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Kurt, real quick.
Yes.
Are you able to share the presentation?
Oh.
So that those of us online can see what you're.
All right, hang on. Give me one second while I thought we were there, so.
He's doing that. Um, there is actually one other source of funding that our satellites have access to, that that we don't, but the satellites do. And in fact, there is law that requires them to spend that funding that's not listed there, and that's M and O. Maintenance and operation. So our satellite districts have that that maintenance and operation fund, and that is what what used to be called the Memo 219. Um, uh, the supplanting worksheet is prior to the formation of JTED. Uh, the school districts were spending X number of dollars towards CTE. And they are required, once JTED was formed, they're required to maintain that level of support on a per student basis. So whatever they were providing for student, and that's the worksheet analysis of M and O, they have to continue to spend that M and O amount. And it is per student. So, for example, as they all, school district has grown substantially. Compared to other. They're uh, per student, that increases because they have that many more students. So if they were supporting CTE with M and O funds to the extent of maybe a thousand per student per year, then they need to continue to spend a thousand per student per year. But of course, that increases with enrollment. So the the M and O is a funding source that our satellites have that we don't have because our M and O actually comes from our JTED.
Now, their original um, amount, like when we started in two thousand and seven, they had to establish how much they had contributed prior.
Right.
And maintain that effort.
Yes.
That is adjusted annually, that amount.
On per student. Per student basis.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, Kathy.
Uh, excuse me for interrupting. Just a quick note before we get too far along. I believe we still need to formally call the meeting to order and approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, Chris. Let's be official. Hold the order. Chris roll call.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Cindy Rankin.
Here.
Dr. Wayne Pete.
Here.
Alex Hakami. Brenda Marietti. And Bob Schlinger. I didn't hear them, but I see them. Thank you.
We have a question to approve the agenda.
I move. We approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Kathy, I had a quick question. Is there an inflation adjustment on the M and O every year?
No, not that I'm aware of. Tina's on online. She might have the answer to that, but I.
Yeah, yes, there is. There is an inflation adjustment on the on the maintenance of effort. There is.
Oh, thank you.
So it's a it's a per student basis, and then it's adjusted by um, inflation.
This federal or state?
It's. It's state.
It's state.
The M and O that the state gives the school district to operate. Um, and working, having worked in several school districts and having to do what was called the Memo 219, which is now doesn't have a name. It's just called the worksheet. Uh, most of the expenses back then were for salary, teacher salaries, because all teachers prior to JTED were paid out of M and O. So that usually accounts for the bulk of it. Um, for most districts to maintain that that same number of teachers or that same inflation adjusted uh, per student analysis.
Good deal. All right. So we'll take a look at these kind of one at a time and whoops. I don't know why this is not working. We sent our IT guys back too quick.
We'll get them back.
Would you? Thank you.
Wonder if it's.
Not we just send him into it from here.
They're all open there.
Can you, can you do it now that it's not? It's been awful.
There it is. Okay, this screen has to be visible.
Okay.
So we're good.
Okay, so.
Thank you. But that can't cover it up, so.
It would be this screen, I believe. I try it now.
No.
No.
One Carlos is on his way back.
Okay.
Maybe let's try this. No.
No, can we minimize this?
But I'm gonna try one more thing before, and then if that doesn't work, then try that. So. So what do you wanna do now? Minimize.
We just minimize this, this. And now it will work the same thing. Said that.
It's time to probably.
Yeah.
This is this is the one you're on. Yeah, okay, so let me try now. Is it set?
Okay, now it's working.
Okay, let me let me. Okay, let me, let me sound.
This goes in and out of working, but now it's working. Well. Okay, thank you. There we go. Thank you very much for your help. Appreciate that. Now, we're just not gonna touch that anymore. We're just gonna leave our hands off of it. Okay, so starting with, with.
But, but Kurt, unfortunately, we can't see what, the presentation.
Uh, okay, hang on one second. Thank you for letting us know that.
Yeah. There we go.
And this is not advancing now. Yeah. Now, can you see the screen, Dr. Pete?
Yes. Oh.
And it's advancing. It's a twofer. We got them both. Thank you. Okay.
Yep, can see it.
Cynthia, yeah?
Yes, thanks.
Are you, you're able to see it?
Yes, thanks.
So Patty and Brenda, chime in, and Kathy, you guys have all written the grant numerous times. But Patty, you wanna share a little bit about the Perkins grant that our CT directors submit annually?
So every year, they have to write a plan for the Perkins grant. And so they have to base it on, um, goals that they wanna do for this, the, the year. And this, you can see up there how it's based, the funding is based, but they have to write like, like a, a, an application to the Department of Ed to approve their purpose, Perkins, Perkins plan based on, um, you know, whatever their needs are. And they also have to do, it's called a CLNA, so CLA, so it's, I think, uh.
Local needs assessment.
Yeah, local need assessment. And so they have to have that meeting with industry people, with teachers, with, you know, community partners, and that's where they develop their goals from. That ha, that usually happens every spring. Then they write their grant, and then, you know, they will be approved or not approved for their grant. So those are their goals, and I think there's a slide, slide coming up soon that it shows the areas of where they can spend their Perkins money.
So it's overwhelmingly based on the poverty level, and it's not based on enrollment. So whether a school has, like, let's just pick a, we'll pick on Flowing Wells, right? Whether we have eight or 12 programs, and whether we have, you know, 800 or 1200 students enrolled, isn't the issue. The question is, Pima County, how many five to 17-year-olds are there? So is it rich in young people? Are there a lot of young ones to educate? And how many of them live in poverty? And those two factors determine how, how much money the schools within that region, within that county are gonna be receiving. So, thoughts or questions on that? Brenda, anything you have?
I'm wondering, staying the same now, we have a new person at the top for the federal grants.
So Tina, did you go to Washington, um, Washington Conference?
National Policy.
National Policy.
I did not go this year, but I went last year.
But I would say just based on the meeting that, that the Perkins funding is becoming less every, every year, but I don't know. And it, not because of somebody new in, in Washington, but just because of the funding. I don't know what percentage, but I do look that their overall Perkins is, is declining a little bit based on, um, funding.
That, that's correct. It historically has been around 40 million going into Arizona from the federal. And, uh, it kind of heads and blows based on that number, but it's usually about 40 million.
Are any of the five to 17-year-olds excluded if they are Dreamers, for example?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
The census includes Dreamers. It includes.
So basically, if you have a pause.
You don't ask, you don't ask about immigration status, so they generate funding because schools don't know whether they're, uh, they have legal status or not, because we don't ask. So all, all students generate funding.
Okay. Has anybody threatened, uh, to make that kind of change?
It would have to be a change at the census level.
Okay.
If there have been changes discussed in who's counted in the census, usually it's everybody who is physically the, around, they count. So I haven't heard that they're going to change that. Um, but the census count is also the calculation used for Title I and for a whole bunch of other federal and state programs. So I, I haven't heard a change in how the census will be done, but that's that, if they did make a change to that, that it would impact Perkins and many other funding sources as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I did talk to, um, a person who attended the National Policy Sem- Seminar. Uh, what? Was that?
March.
March, yeah. Um, it's, happens to be Angus Donaldson, the Ag Teacher of Flowing Wells. And, um, he, I asked him, so what is the scuttlebutt? What did they say? Uh, as they look at dismantling the Department of Ed, how might that impact CTE funding? And what the speakers there said was they don't anticipate that in any way impacting Career and Tech Ed. The Career and Tech Ed seems to have really broad support. Other areas of education, not so much, or other initiatives, not as much. But, so we'll see. Time, time will tell.
Can I ask one more question before we go? I, I know you'll probably get to this. I just saw an article in the paper about the, um, the, uh, Arizona budget, and the, one of the reasons they cited is being over, uh, prescribed, if you will, is because of the, the freshman, um, funding for, um, career and technical education. Is that part of this process, or is, are you gonna get to that later?
That's CTED funding.
No, it.
Is it?
It is, um.
The.
State, why? It is tied to the CTEDs, but it is the funding that we were able to get.
Okay.
Partial restoration. And that partial restoration was estimated to be at a certain amount. And that was for, uh, several years ago, the freshmen that enrolled in high-demand programs. At that time, they had to persist through their junior year. So this path, when they became juniors, if they were still enrolled in a CTE program, and this was only for the ones that were in those high-demand programs as freshmen, then they were counted. So when all was said and done with those counts, uh, this spring, of those juniors, the count was much higher than the estimate that was given, uh, at the time, the JLBC. So that's where, oh wow, we, we generated 10 million more than we thought we were going to. And now there's a shortage for a number of different reasons, but that's one of those pieces. Um, and it is tied to the in-demand, high-demand, uh, as determined by the Arizona Commerce Authority.
Good, thanks. Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, but, um, I think it's ironic that they're citing that as one of their, uh, the reasons why they're, you know, over budget, so, or in debt. In contrast to highlighting the one particularly of the ESA over prescription. So, anyway, sorry. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to bring that up.
I, I think I would chime in and agree with Cindy on this. The, that is being very disingenuous as to why they're in a budget shortfall. $10 million is nothing compared to, uh, the amount of money that's being spent on other areas, especially the ESA.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it was the last of the items mentioned, but it still was mentioned, which is, uh, sends the wrong message to the community, which is unfortunate, as usual. Yeah.
So the second, second pot of money is state priority dollars. And I brought a copy of this list. And we can.
Um, you can do it. Thanks, Richard.
Um. Patty, could you pull that up and email that to?
Yeah.
So, um, so Cindy, Dr. Dr. Rankin and Dr. Pete, Patty will email you a, a copy of the document we're looking at. But this is a, a list of the approved programs for 25, 26. And in the far-left column is a ranking, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And so the state gets, has this smaller pot of money. Perkins, CTED is the big pot. Federal Perkins is the next size. The smallest of the three major pots would be priority funds. And the state gets to kind of determine, well, how are we gonna prioritize the use of these funds? And what they, what they do is they do provide a tiny incentive, and here's the weight on this slide. So like a 10% bump if it's, uh, ranked as a number five. So incentivizing those programs to be started and maintained. And then four would be a kind of neutral or flat. It's full funding, 1.0. And then a little ding if you're ranked three, and a little bigger ding if you're ranked two, and a little bigger ding yet if you're ranked number one. So if you're in the one ranking, you're still at 70% of what you'd be eligible for, of state priority funds. Now, this is the official list of programs. But, um, in a little bit, a different slide, we mentioned local occupational programs, and I'll pass this out in a little bit, but we've got another list of programs that were, that are not on this list. That local districts, CTEDs and local districts have submitted to the state for approval, and those can be funded as well. So how do they calculate your state funding? Well, it's really two things. It's ninth through 12th enrollment, 75% of it is based on your enrollment. And didn't it used to be just 11th and 12th in a previous iteration years ago? Yeah, but it's ninth through 12th enrollment, so it is enrollment-driven. Uh, and then times the weight. And then 25% is based on surveys. And so, six months or so after the students graduate, the teachers or someone that the district hires to do this contacts the graduates, the students who completed a program, and has a questionnaire, and they ask, are you pursuing further education? Related specifically to the field. So if you were a graphic design student, are you pursuing further education in something related to that? Or are you employed in that area? Or are you in the military? Or in Peace Corps, a church mission, something else? Uh, and based on those results, um, that determines about 25, not about, but it determines 25% of the funding that'll come to your school from priority. So what we've discovered is, uh, the best results typically come when the teacher's able to make that contact because the kids will pick up the phone and answer the survey for the teacher. And then, um, frequently, not always, but frequently, the districts pay a small, uh, stipend of sorts, like $25 per, per successful call um, to the teachers, because it's additional work in the evenings and weekends, whenever you can reach these young, young people. Now, we here at Central don't receive Perkins or priority, yet our teachers make the call. And Kathy, why, why do we do that?
Because we want the data. We wanna know how our students are doing. But also, uh, some of this then can be, uh, a part of the, uh, school district that they attended. It can be good data for them, even though the student came to us as a central campus program. It's good data for the school district to know how their students are doing after graduation, who attended central campus program. So we do it for a number of, of reasons. Um, even though we don't get any of the funding, we still do the, the work of the placement calls, because it's good information to have.
So when do we share with the districts, what the information we give?
Um, Patty can probably answer specifically, but the surveys are done six to nine months after the student graduates from high school. And then there's a cutoff date, and then it is probably several months after that cutoff date, then we share it with the school districts.
So they get some time that next year.
And they get, they get, uh, the CCRI data, which are the data for, um, how many students got dual enrollment, how many students who attended Central, so they can use that as part of their A through F letter grades.
Sounds like that should be something that we add, the list of things, uh, the allocation conversation, all the things we provide.
We, we do, we do have that, um, as part of what we do. We're working on that spreadsheet, actually. Um, we have a draft of it, but still have a long way to go, because there are a number of things that we do that we are, uh, the challenge is the list and then monetizing, what is that worth? And what are the people that put in that work? How much is that as prorated? So, yeah.
So anything anyone would add to this about the priority funds?
Uh, one other little piece of information, you may have covered this, I'm not sure. But the reason this exists is not because the state of Arizona has said CTE is great, and we wanna give extra money to CTE. There, there is an ulterior motive, and the reason this funding exists is because of Perkins. So in order for Arizona to receive federal Perkins funds, Arizona has to match. And so it's a requirement in order to receive the Perkins, that the state put up money as a match, and that's what this is. Is that match. So if Perkins were ever to go away from the feds, this would go away too, because the, this exists not out of the goodness of Arizona's lawmakers' hearts, it's because they have to to get the Perkins. I don't know if any, if that trivia.
It's not a one-to-one match either. Isn't it like a point three or?
It's a, it's a proportionate, I don't know what that percent is. Tina might know that, but.
Do you know Tina?
I, 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 well, I don't, I, but I, I believe it's like 25% is what I remember.
That sounds about right.
And I also believe that this is not a carryover, uh, grant. So if the state, the districts don't spend all of their priority by the end of the fiscal year, and they do have a hard cutoff of 630, not, uh, not in September like the Perkins, that the, any amount not spent goes back into the pot for the next year's allocation to the districts. Uh, and as I was going around the state consulting, you wouldn't believe how many districts would not spend all of their priority. It was quite puzzling.
Yeah, that is consistent too, Ken, with the Perkins. There are many districts that don't spend all of their Perkins as well. And we also know they do the same thing with CTED, JTED funds.
Yes, yes.
So it is challenging, because spending money is work. Doing it properly and procuring the proper, it's work. It's a lot of work. It's labor-intensive. And I'm not sure that unspent priority goes back to the school districts. I think I have seen it swept into the general fund. Unspent funds get swept into the state budget, but I could be wrong on that, but.
You lose the Perkins?
Yeah, I, I, I just know that that. Yeah, I, I, I just know that that's what they tell us. Um A D tells us that it goes back into the pot, but who knows what is actually happening.
Yeah, uh we have a question and can Tina, maybe you can answer this. Unspent Perkins, can they roll it over? And I think sometimes is the answer, but you could probably.
Uh I, I don't know if there's a, if, if there's a cap, like on Title One, there's a fifteen percent cap on the amount that you can. Carry forward, but they do have carry forward. But I'm. I can reach out, but I don't know what the restrictions are on that.
I think it is capped.
Okay. Wouldn't surprise me.
Other thoughts, yeah Brenda.
They just need to hire you if they wanna spend all their money.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts on priority? Okay. Now, we have not provided this for you, it's really in the weeds, we can send you the whole document if you'd like, it's several pages long. That just outlines what things Perkins can and cannot be spent on versus what things. Priority can and cannot be spent on. So they each have their own restrictions.
Have any of them added junior high to it?
Middle school Perkins, you can use Perkins funds for middle school. For exploration, but as time has gone on, they've been looser and looser. With some of those rules and uh but for career exploration. Programs, materials, yes, you can use Perkins. And priority.
If you could go at any center.
Sure, you wanted to just add that to the list, we'll just send them all out.
Well, I've sent the other ones, but I can't.
So here's a map of the C Teds in the state of Arizona, and you guys probably know the answer to this. And I put pale green because on my slide it looked pale green, but it looks more almost white here, but all these white spots. What are the white spots? Why isn't all of Pima County? Green.
Reservation.
That's a good guess, reservation makes sense, but not it.
The bombing range.
Bombing range, good guess, but not it.
No school districts.
Only an elementary school district, yeah. So these, so for instance, in Green Valley, we have the Continental Elementary District, in three points, we have the Alter Valley. And so Alter Valley students have their option of going to Morana High School, Choya High School. Or of course, everyone's preference, Flowing Wells High School, right?
What did? When we have the J Ted, when we finally got, got it, didn't Alter Valley and some of those districts have to pay or do something they didn't know they were gonna have to do? I remember some hubbub, but I don't remember what the hubbub was.
I don't know, because the, the money follows the kid right to the school that they go to, so they are still. Invited to and participate in all of the career ticket. If you're in the Continental School District, you can choose between Sararita. Or Rio Rico. If you're in Alter Valley, between the three schools I just mentioned. Um if you're in the town of Oracle. Uh you can go to. I think is, isn't CDO the option, one of the options in Mamma San Manuel, the other one, if you live in the town of Oracle? So all students are. Are covered if they're in the geographical boundaries of our J.
So Kurt, just, just as a clarification, I think what Brenda is talking about is um when we first started. Because uh Oracle is did not join the J Ted and neither did Alter Valley, neither did Continental. Um they weren't included, but years ago, the law changed and allows um if you're tuitioned. Or I'm sorry, if you, if you are, if you're an elementary district that is in, a student that's enrolled in a high school district that's a member. Then you can be funded, and I think that's what Brenda is talking about, is that was a change that we, but this has been years ago, it was in our early years. Where as long as you're enrolled in a member district. Um from an elementary district, then you can be funded.
Perfect, thank you Tina. And Brenda was shaking her head, yeah, that is.
I know it was something, but.
But, but, but example, as an example, if one of those kids is a homeschool kid. In Alter Valley and wants to come to us, they would have to tuition in because they're not enrolled in a district that's a member. So that's kind of the distinction, they have to, they have to enroll in a high school that's a member of us to get fun, to be fundable.
And the two. The tuition is irregardless, or not irregardless, not a word, regardless of ESA, right? I mean, we know ESA.
So if they, if. Yeah, if they have tuition no matter where they are, but yes, if they are, if they are not. Member district of ours, I E if they are a private school. Alter Valley or.
You, you cut in and out Tina, can you say that one more time?
Yeah, so you're right, regardless, regardless of. Uh ESA or not, because all ESA kids are tuitioned in, um. But it, but even if you don't accept an ESA, if you are a private school, if you enroll in a private school or you're homeschooled. And you live in Alter Valley or Continental or Oracle, you would not be fundable. In order to become fundable, you have to enroll in a high school that's a member.
Thank you.
And so you pay tuition, so yes, those kids were paid tuition to come to us. I- interestingly enough, we just had a question this morning about a kid from Elgin. Who that's not our district anyway, that's the other C Ted, but still, they can come to us, they just have to pay tuition.
Okay, thank you much. Okay, so we're gonna take a minute and look at C Ted funding and the eligibility, there's these eight criteria. Um some of them were put in place when we got our funding restored. And some of them were there prior to that. So you have to have a certified teacher in the room, and they have to be CTE certified. And they have to be CT certified in the right area, so they just can't have any CT certification. If they're in this room teaching physical therapy, then they have to have the health careers certification. Um the second one is kind of a silly one, because it says, uh it doesn't say sixty percent of the students have to pass the TSA. The Technical Skills Assessment. What it says is the pass score has to be sixty, well, the state has set that. And so we automatically all meet that because the state sets that score, not us. And then a, a big change when our funding was restored. And I remember Tina, the day that you were meeting, I think it was here in Tucson and. Um I think it was the Speaker of the House at the time. Had made some comments about. You know, non CTE programs being funded and. Do you recall that? And he made that publicly and you, you met with them afterwards and kind of filled him in on. You know, but there was a, an issue back, way back um with like. Yearbook being called a class, well. It, it's not yearbook, it's, you know, graphic communications or digital, you know, it's, it's a CTE program of which yearbook is a product. Um but as a result of some of the concerns they had, they said that they wanted to make sure that over half the class time is spent. Doing lab activities. Now, one of the questions I always ask our teachers is, and I'm gonna ask you guys, is lab a location? Or is lab the nature of an activity? What do you think?
I think it's the nature of the activity, but I think the state would probably think it's where you sit.
Well, thankfully, you're right, Brenda, it is the nature of the activity. So if you're a business teacher, you don't necessarily have a quote unquote lab. It's real easy, culinary has a kitchen, ag has a greenhouse, welding has a welding shop. Business, accounting, they still have the same four walls and thirty desks, right? Um so it's really the nature of the activity. And is the question you would ask is, are they taking the things they learned that were kind of theoretical? And implementing it and applying it to actually perform the work. And so in a business class, they might learn about business plans. All the aspects of creating a business plan, identifying your product and your price and your market and all that. But then, when the teacher says, okay, for the next four months, you are each gonna create a business plan. And we're gonna have industry people come in. And evaluate your business plan, while they're spending those four months doing that, they're doing lab time, so that's a requirement. That's not just for Central, that's for satellite. After have a CTSO, student organization. We have to be able to demonstrate a need for additional funding, like specialized equipment, software, additional staffing. There has to be a need for the funding. That's not normally a problem, we normally, and what they're really looking at is, does it exceed? What would be considered a standard classroom, like four walls, a set of classroom textbooks. Thirty desks, right, a monitor up front to display, and that, that's basically standard, so things above that. Would be what are required. Post-secondary. Some of our programs are dual credit, but you don't have to do that in order to be aligned. It needs to result in credential, and there's a massive list of approved credentials. And it's always being updated, and you need to have partnerships with business and industry that is normally. Uh kind of the baseline for that is the advisory committee that a teacher would have, or the regional one that we provide that. Our district provides, that any teacher can participate in, and they need to participate in at least two per year. So. Thoughts or questions on this? Okay. So the two types of programs, satellite and central, so if you're a satellite. The member district hires the teacher. They pay for the building, the utilities, any and all expenses with parking and security and. Everything, right, and they enroll their students. And if the bottom bullet there says that if there is an open seat in that class, they must allow. Students from other schools, homeschool, charter school or private school to attend if they request it. And the funding follows that student. And so it's not like they're absorbing a cost that. That's gonna hurt their school, but priority goes to the students enrolled full time at that campus. So it's only if there's an extra seat. Questions, input? Does that actually happen, Brenda? Very rarely, the most common would be between public schools, like an Ironwood Ridge kid might go to Mountain View. Um most commonly would be within a district, but a Morana kid would go to Mountain View. Because no one is feeling threatened by that, like I'm not gonna lose my student, right? They're in the same district and if they move to that school, we didn't lose the funding as a district. Um probably second would be. From a neighboring district over. Uh charter schools have no, I can't imagine they have an interest in letting. Their students know about this, because no one wants their students to go to another campus, fall in love with it. And uproot and leave and move in over there. And um I'd say probably the, the biggest would be homeschool, they have nothing to lose, they're not connected with the campus. So if they know that it's a possibility, they would be likely to do that.
Um. When we tried on our, our ag and it was just almost impossible, what'd you end up finishing with, two kids, three kids?
What's that?
When we tried to switch ag kids from Am Fly to us.
We, but we got a ton of um. Well, that was that one little project we did.
Yeah.
But I still had a whole bunch of kids from like up in this.
Area.
Moran School District.
But I, our project was, you got some kids that wanted to do animals.
Yeah.
They had that, wanted to plants.
Yeah, yeah.
It was very difficult.
What was hard, it's not that there wasn't a lack of willingness to share kids. It was health schedules, transportation, so we had three or four. Young men who came first period to my ag program. And we had a couple of our kids that went over for their animal science. And it, it was just. Hard to pull off logistically. Um probably would be easier in a higher income area of town where students have wheels and, and they can transport themselves. Um but that wasn't the case with our kids.
But the bell schedule is still a challenge. Because every high school has a different bell schedule with this X amount of other classes and then with.
Alright, and then of course at Central, we hire the teachers, and Central would also include our leased land. So our programs at Mountain View and Flowing Wells, for example. So uh. Pima J Ted hires the teacher, pays for the building, enrolls the students from all member districts, plus homeschool, private school, charter school. G E V candidates, et cetera, up until they turn twenty two. So questions on that? The purpose of C Ted funding is to supplement CTE programs. The funding comes from really two sources, property tax and the state general fund. And right now, we get somewhere around five million from property taxes and somewhere around twenty five million out of the state general fund. So it's heavily from the state general fund. Which was the problem. Ten years ago, when we almost lost our funding, what the state given, the state can take at the way of. And so what is local property taxes? You know, is, is really guaranteed. Um. It's based on enrollment of ten through twelve plus, and there's a slide coming up where we'll talk about ninth grade, and I've got the list of regional approved. Um programs. And then one of the best things, uh sometimes I'm amazed the state. Did some really, really good things for us from the beginning that you sit there and you think, wow. This, this would have been so problematic had they not done this. But they did not pit satellite against Central by saying only one of them can receive funding. They can both simultaneously receive funding. So if there's a young person at Mountain View High School in sports medicine. That after school wants to come to this room. And do physical therapy technician. They receive funding, we receive funding, no one is hurt. Now, if our program is exceeds. The total, Patty, you want to explain about how we, we might actually grant point two five? And make sure they receive their funding first, uh if. The total is too much because they're taking a really long program with us.
Yeah, so what happens is like, if they take a law fighter, that would be some point seven five. Around if it impacts their funding, we hold them on. Our list, they can send them some of that, but that doesn't usually happen um too often. We just make sure that we don't go, you know, that we don't. Go higher than that, because we go higher than that, if we go, if we were to average a one point O, we, we would be taking funding.
I. I couldn't quite hear that Patty, could you say that one more time? Uh the reception was a little.
Um so. Our programs that we offer are either a point two five, which is a fraction of A D M, point five. Seven five. However, we could potentially, if we were to go to a point one point O, it would impact the districts. Because they would not be able to, to um get their whole one point O, so that's why we don't ever do that. And then we sometimes have to watch it with the, you know, some other programs or other students and programs depending on what they're taking. Because they could be taking like a, you know, two different classes from us.
So if they're, I, I, I hesitate to use the term uh double dipping. Uh it's a way to prevent us overcharging?
Yeah, we, we just wanna hold them harmless so that they get their one point O.
Yes.
So that. But, so that's what it is, I mean, we could, but we don't do it.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, it's really good news that students can participate and therefore um, one of the things I get excited about is when I. When I teach our program management course, and every high school CTE teacher takes program management. And I, one of the things I love about that is that it gives me a chance to share with them that if they send students. To our program. That they're gonna get full funding and we're gonna receive funding. And it's what's best for kids, we're never in competition against each other. And so um our sports medicine teachers don't hesitate to tell them about. You know, some of our medical programs would be a natural next step for them. Uh which is really nice, so um. Anyway. That's some good news. Anyway, that's some good news. And that's a big expense. The state could have gone the other direction and. Said, no, we're funding one class, you figure out satellite or central, thankfully, it can be both. So satellites are limited to funding one CTE course per year. So if. If um, a student takes culinary. And technical theater, stagecraft at the same time on their campus. They're only gonna generate point two five ADM. Okay, now there's reasons why the district would likely say, that's fine, we'll let you take both of them. Even though we're not gonna receive funding for both, we're only gonna receive one portion of funding. And that's most commonly just because it's what's best for that person. Um, if you've got a high school freshman or. It it doesn't have to be a freshman, it could be a sophomore, it could be any, any age, but. They're on the edge of like dropping out and what keeps them in school are their CT classes. And you can encourage them and keep them in school. You know, what what's best for kids is number one. So I think that's a shared value of all of our member districts is that they do what's best for kids. And a close second is, while we're at it, let's try to maximize funding. But. If push comes to shove, what's best for kids always wins out.
I do think one of the things that they're more concerned about is not the extra point two five, but if they go under four academic classes. Which would get not have enough of one point O ADM, then that's a different conversation. A lot of times won't let a student take another CTE if it's gonna impact that one point O. Which is a totally different side of funding, but.
So this number is ballpark, real rough, but about sixty-four hundred a year is what current ADM is this year's. And so, um, what that means, ADM stands for average daily membership. So one student who shows up a hundred and eighty days. For all their classes generates approximately that amount of money. Now that's higher, um, that's for high school. And that's higher than it is for elementary. So there's like a. A multiplier, one point three three nine. So you you get about thirty-four percent more money to educate a high school student than you do. For cater rate. And so that's the amount of money that is the baseline, assuming they don't miss any days of school. But attendance is factored into that. So there really is a financial hit to a district for every day students are absent.
Or if they start late or in or leave early, that'd be awesome too.
Good point. Okay, so the last point is that if a satellite student does take two or three courses. Or like a block class. So we'd love to move to block classes for a lot of our. Project-based tool-intensive type CTE programs. One of the reasons that satellites aren't doing that in droves is it's expensive. You're. You're. Basically foregoing funding for one of those two class periods. So it's gotta be something where the district has a strong commitment that we're gonna just suck it up and do it because it's really important for this program. Um, but they're only gonna receive. Half the funding because you can only be funded for one class.
Bert, can you give us an example, sorry, of a block class that we're doing?
Well, so at Flowing Wells High School, they do have automotive block and so it's, um, is it first and second period, Bob?
I'm not sure.
I think it is. I think it's the first two periods of the day that the kids come. And so the high school itself does not have a block schedule. Or a modified block. They're a traditional schedule, six classes a day, fifty-five minutes each. But in automotive, when you register for period one, you're automatically registered for period two as well. And so the students, if they wanna be in the senior, like the advanced automotive block. You've gotta commit to two hours a day for automotive. And and it's really beneficial to kids and teachers because setup and cleanup. Can each be ten minutes. So out of a fifty-five minute or fifty-four minute class period. You just ate up almost half of your available class time just setting up and cleaning up. If you extend that to be a two-hour block class. Basically, that entire additional hour is usable, is actual. In the lab productive work time. So in a block class, you can about get three days worth of. Three hours worth of work done in two hours. It's that efficient. It's just at this point. The funding is the biggest limitation. You're doing two hours. And receiving only one hour's worth of funding. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that doesn't, I'm just, so that's differentiated though from the central. Uh, where almost all of our classes are longer chunks of of time, right?
Yeah, because central, we can do a point two five class or a point, I don't know, do we, do we do a single? We do a couple?
Yeah.
Point five is more common, point seven five. And so we can receive more funding the longer the students are with us.
Okay.
That's not true at a high school, at a satellite.
Okay. Thanks.
There's, to my knowledge, not a single block in TUSD, but.
How about campfire? I don't remember if they have anymore now. They used to when auto.
It's pretty rare.
But I, I'm not sure they do anymore.
Questions or thoughts? On this slide? Okay, and then freshman funding. So I've got a list here and we should be getting in the next few weeks or summer conference at latest. An updated version of this.
I don't. Very limited.
Oh, thank you. A lot of times they they release a lot of the new updates, kind of aligned with conference midsummer-ish. And so this is by county. So they took a look at every county and determined which. Programs, mine is not two-sided. Are yours two-sided?
Yeah.
I got the one bad. Well, I don't even need it, but you can take a look at Pima and Cochee County. And see which of our programs are eligible for ninth grade funding. But we don't get the funding same year. We get it a couple of years later. And the students have to persist. They have to take CTE their sophomore year. It doesn't have to be the same program. So let's say they sign up for culinary as a freshman, realize it's not for them. Switch to animation as a sophomore, they still persisted. So persistent doesn't mean two years in the same program, it means two years in CTE, is that correct?
But they have to persist in their junior, junior year.
Oh, in.
They don't.
Okay, thank you.
CTE sophomore year, but they have to be enrolled in any CTE program junior year.
By their junior year or including their junior?
Including their.
Only, yes.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful.
Test is what are they doing the junior year?
Okay.
And if they're in any CTE and they were also in the in-demand. Program as a freshman, then they get funded and that's why there were many of them that now, um, are. Uh, well, potentially ten million dollars that needs to go to school districts.
Now, from your experience, and I don't know the answer. How many, how much does this change from year to year? Minor changes or?
The list?
Uh huh.
Tina might remember more on how often it changes. I, you know, there has been some that have been added and. And taken off, but I don't know if like.
It's, it, it's not super dynamic. I mean, obviously we have, you know, these up and coming, um. Programs, you know, that that are new and that become in demand really fast, so those would get added, you know, and some of, but. But, but you know, it's a, it's not that, you know, one or two a year, not anything major dynamic. And and it's not, it doesn't seem to be really unexpected. In other words, it's easy to plan for that because especially the ones that drop off, you kind of know. That just jobs are slowing down, enrollment slowing down. I mean, I haven't seen any. Shockers, I guess I would say. The the one, the thing that is mostly surprising, I think, is sometimes when stuff doesn't make the list, but it probably should.
Well, and I also think that sometimes it doesn't make sense that welding's high demand maybe in Pima County, but not in Maricopa. But that's kind of a specific.
Yeah, the regional list is the one, the regional part is the part that seems is not as. Uh, not as based on reason as as one would think. For, for instance, auto collision, right, is something that's high demand here, but not auto, which, you know, that doesn't make any sense. Most people don't, I don't know, it just, yeah, some of these are just anomalies, but for the most part, it's fairly, fairly consistent.
That's because we wreck our cars before they're old enough to need repair work. You're, you're not even the drivers.
Maybe, but they're kind of meant to crumble and it's not, you know, they 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 total faster than they used to. So it would seem like, you know, repair is more, but you know, again, it, I don't know what goes in the list, but the regional part, Patty's right. That's the one that's more of a head scratcher.
Then we have local occupational programs. We have some in this, as a matter of fact, the classroom we're in. Was the first physical therapy technician program in the state and so. You might remember what's eight years ago, nine years ago, Stacy Rich. Was, one of her tasks when she worked here was to pull together an advisory committee. And work with our administration to submit the application for a local occupational program. Uh, since then, I think there's now a couple more in the state. And then what can happen is if it looks like it's something that's more. Uh, of of gaining interest statewide, it can be moved to. That official list that you saw, um, earlier. But some of these are only offered in one place by one district. At least it gives you some ideas as to what, what are the kind of programs being offered around the state? That are not represented on the official list.
And the other piece of it is too, is it like. Uh, one district, like we had PTT first, but then now, um, Westmech has it, everyone has to submit a local occupational. If it's not on the, the large and, you know, approved programs by the, um, CTE department.
Now, don't they have the option of, uh. Utilizing what we submitted?
So yes, I mean, they can use that, but then they also put it in their own like, because it asked for like, um. Industry needs and things like that, so they would put in some.
For their own reason, okay.
The other piece of it too is that they, um, from the approved list. They can, that, um, ADE can be decided they're not gonna offer a program that's been on the approved approved list. And so you'll see next fall, we will be submitting for air transportation LOPE, which has been a. Approved program for years, but they decide based on industry needs and things across the state. The Department of Education, um, closed that as a regular listed program. So you'll see a, a, there's a link to that.
You can see, um, those here are the ones that, um, they're removing. Effective this coming year from the approved list, so that we have to do an LOPE. Local occupational program request. We do have the data from industry that there are jobs. And there is a shortage of skilled workers with the certifications that we offer in air transportation. Specifically drone operator, drones are going to be increasing, not. Going away and as well as pilots. And at AA.
So I'm looking at this list. I don't know of any electronics drafting programs in Pima County. I know there was one digital printing in Pueblo. I don't know of any others. So we'll have to see if Tucson Unified decides to submit for a local occupational program.
Have that one.
Maybe they don't.
I don't know for sure, right, but.
Uh, interior design, I don't know if any left. I think the Vale one was the last one and that that shut down. Mechanical drafting surprises me, um, and we do have some. Well, we have architectural drafting, we don't have any mechanical drafting.
However, in engineering programs and even manufacturing programs, they do get into that.
Okay.
As part of those other programs, just not as a standalone.
And there was at least one music and audio, I think two, I think, I know Vale has one and I don't know what Aaron's plan is with that, um. And electronics technologies. I thought TUSD had one, but I don't know if they still do. Paul Sweeney, I think, was the teacher or was the teacher.
I think it went away.
Did it go away? Okay, and I haven't seen him in years, so it probably did go away. Okay. So any questions on that concept that you can have programs that don't exist on the master list? Okay, so here's your little assignment is to try to figure out. Uh, which of these students most likely generates the most funding? Now, the important thing to note is that all four students took four courses. Hmm. But every one of them generates a different amount of funding, potentially. So what are your thoughts? We'll just kind of throw around some ideas, then I'll show you the next slide that has quote-unquote the answer. What's gonna be a determining, some determining factors as to whether or not. John produces or generates the most funding or.
They start as a freshman. Okay, that is, if they continue through.
All freshmen?
No, only the high.
So, okay, so if they're on that list of in-demand programs, the freshman one could count. Okay, and if not, then it doesn't count. What else?
So he, he persisted as well, if that was the same course throughout, rather than independent courses.
So looking at John, if his is on the in-demand list, he did persist, he's there as a junior, all four will get funded. If it's not on the list, three get funded. Okay, they're satellite, so they're funded at point two five. Each. So he's either gonna generate one point O over four years or point seven five over three years, depending on. Whether the freshman one counts or not.
And also the freshman one is not based on complete ADM, so it's not, so it's a fraction. And Tina can explain more how they do that, but then we then divide it once to juniors and that money gets sent out to, um, to the district.
Tina, how much funding comes for a freshman class after their, when they persisted to three, three years?
So they generate a point Q five, um, but what, what Patty's saying. Uh, is, is, um, and it's probably not as common with the freshmen, but let, let's say we have a junior. That takes a satellite course with, um, and then also comes to us on a central. Um, they're limited to point seven five total. And the way it does is a portions it, it, uh, out. So we, we could get, for instance, um. And and let's say they drop below even full time on their, on their district. It's all, it's all fractionalized and so we could get. Say a point seven two and the district could get a point eight nine, you know, again, depending on what the student's taking and how much. Uh, we do try to keep the districts whole so that we, we take less ADM, so in most cases they would get one. But then what that means is our point seven five max even gets smaller if we give the district a portion of our time to make their one whole. So. Um, but they're, they're, they do happen in fractions, but for rounding sake, we can say point two five, point five, point seven five. But just recognize that in some cases it's less if they take a lot of CTE.
And I wanted to add too that something can happen after the senior year. That generates funding and that is thirteenth year funding for those high demand program areas. Which is something that we, we do a little bit of, but we want to explore how to maximize. Uh, revenue through offering students who may or may not have been with us. As a CTED, we can enroll recent grads in a program the year after they graduated from high school. And we can get them through a one year and we can generate funding. It's not considered ADM funding. But there are a pot of funds that we can apply to and so it could be a thousand or two per student. And so we really intend to maximize that and that's part of looking at what we can do with empty buildings during the day. Is recent grads, we can be a bridge to their further studies, to their work, to their career, um, that thirteenth year. So not to muddy.
So.
Go ahead, Tina.
Sorry, oh, I was just gonna say the the, and thank you Kathy for that, because the thirteenth year is a is a really um. It's a, it's something that you're right, we haven't done a lot here, but other CTEDs have done, have done that and we're gonna do more. But the nuances of the thirteenth year are interesting, because for a a couple of years, we've had what you've called the completion grant. Where um they give a million dollars, and again, this has been for about maybe six, seven years actually, but but or maybe five years. Anyway, it's a million dollars per year and it's to the kids that are completing their program, that's why they call it the completion grant. They would, they had to completed more than fifty percent of their program while they were in high school. But it doesn't have to be on an in-demand list, so that's, that's, that's the nuance of that one, it's a million dollar flat. So if there's twenty kids, it's a million split between twenty, or if there's two thousand kids, a million dollars dollars is split between. Um, two thousand, so it just really depends on um how many kids are in the program and then that's why it's not clear how much we get per student until they count, count it statewide. Then beyond that, there's the thirteenth year, which came when we got partial freshman rest restoration, that's tied to the in-demand list. But they don't have to have completed fifty percent of their program while they're in high school. In fact, they can have never taken CT in high school at all and just come in their thirteenth year and generate a funding. That is an ADM generation and it is based on the point two five, point five, point seven five model, depending on how. And actually, they can go all the one point oh because they're not enrolled in school anymore, um but that depends on their seat time when they're in the program. So like you said, Kathy, if they, if they come to us long enough to spend an entire, like a Cosmo or something where they're, they're enough time to generate a one point oh in a year. Then we would get one point oh funding and could complete a kid in a year because of the amount of time they could come to us. But that's something we would have to to build out, and again, that has to be something that's on that in-demand list. So um uh nuances, oh, and then the other caveat with the, with the thirteenth year is the students are limited to four years of funding. So while I mentioned that this could be their first year in CTE and we can get funded for them. If they started with us as a freshman and participated either satellite, central, every year, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. Then they would not be eligible for funding their thirteenth year because of that four-year cap. But that's not gonna be the case with most programs right now, because we just got freshman frustration, right? So it's all, it's four years of funding, not four years of CTE, so when freshman was not funding, that wouldn't count. But now, you know, as more years go by that we do have freshman funding, we might run into more and more students. But again, most students don't take all four years of CTE in high school, so. Anyway, sorry, I I hope I didn't go too much into the weeds, because we can get really wonky with this stuff, but that thirteenth year is, because it's got a lot of different caveats to it.
I think Aaron Oroses, uh, what are we doing to promote uh that thirteenth year from a marketing standpoint, uh information standpoint?
So currently, we are program specific, mostly in the health and medical areas of, as I recall. Where students wanted to then finish a credential that maybe they didn't, so we're talking only about a handful. Uh, our team is currently identifying potential opportunities where we have the facility. We have available teachers and so we have not begun marketing yet. We're still internally identifying the logistics surrounding the ability for us to do that. Some low hanging possible fruit that we have examined would be a. Uh, one-year cosmetology program, uh possibly uh barbering, something like that. Um, plus, I think we're looking at maybe MA, uh, offering an MA daytime to thirteenth year. And I think that's it so far that we've talked about, but um it's something that we have to be purposeful about. Because we really have to have the space and the faculty. And so we're identifying that right now and then we would market to our students who recently left us. But then also get the word out to our member districts.
Yeah, thank you, I could see a combination of keeping the lights on during the day with the MA program if you combined it with. Uh, early childhood, uh perhaps uh that combination would really attract a lot of people. So they dropped their kid, their their child off at the. Early ed program and then they do their MA program.
Yes. But they would have to be a recent grad.
Sure.
They would have. Uh, within, they'd have to be graduates this fall, graduates from May.
Okay. That that does, that that limits our. Group, but thank you, that's that's intriguing.
That said, we do have the ability to uh offer adult ed, we just need to tie into. The federal funding streams for student uh scholarships and student loans and that kind of thing. And that's a process, but we are looking at that as well for daytime use, which would be all adults, any adults. Uh, we could do that right now for tuition, but our understanding is most folks would like. That paid for out of some other funding stream like a scholarship or a um a grant or something like that.
Right, yeah, wonderful, thank you.
Tell me what you'd like to do, do you wanna take five minutes for people to use the restroom and grab some snacks? Or plow through?
It's up to you all.
Plow through? Okay. So let's take a look, which one of these do you predict is going to be generating the most revenue for the four periods that they, or the four courses they took? I shouldn't say periods, because there's a little tricky one in there.
Would be Suzanne, because she's taking two and the. And generating.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah, so Suzanne is gonna be, so you know, we would hope, well, and which one is probably gonna be possibly the the least?
Either of the two, well, Carmen, maybe.
Likely Carmen.
Yeah.
Unless, well, we'll see in a second, so let's just take a peek. Come on, you can do it, there we go. So John, depending on whether the satellite class is funded or not funded. Would be somewhere between like forty-eight and sixty-four hundred generated to cover the costs of educating him. In four different courses, CT courses over four years. Suzanne, it could be tremendously more than that, depending on how many hours she's with us at Central. Because all of her satellites are funded and Central is funded and it just depends on. How much time she's with us as to how much that looks like. Carlos, for sure, half of the classes he took will will not receive funding. Um, in a perfect world, Carlos would have taken one course each year instead of none as a freshman and two as a sophomore. But we don't know the whole story of Carlos and it could be that for whatever reasons, this was really important. And the school made a decision that it's in his best interest that we take the funding. I don't know if it's a funding cut, but we're not maximizing our funding, but we do what's best for this individual. Um, but our counselors do know about this, so there is, and and our, I I think most of our site principals know about this. So I think there's a conscious effort to try to schedule, you know, their four years, to make their four-year plan, their E cap. Where they've doled them out one course per year, when and if that works, right? And then Carmen, it could be as little as sixteen hundred dollars, it could be that only one of the four courses she took generated any funding. But once again, if that's what keeps her in school, that may be a really good investment, so. Lots of factors. So then there are other sources of funds that factor into a teacher's program. They've got their student account, their CTSO account. And so students raise money and the deal with these funds in particular. Is that the teacher cannot spend these dollars without the students voting on and approving it. And minutes of the meeting submitted and the students can't spend it if the teacher doesn't agree to what they're spending on. So the teacher and the students have to be in agreement on how we're gonna use these CTSO dollars. And then they vote on it during their chapter meetings and minutes of the meeting are submitted. With the requisition to get a purchase order or a check. The second one is tax credit dollars and so um two hundred dollars for an individual, four hundred dollars for a couple. Up through April fifteenth and you know about that, I think there's been a lot of effort here to generate those kinds of dollars. There are student assessed, a district assessed student fees. Now, we went away from fees at Central. But some satellites still have fees and the main reason they would have fees is if you were in, for example, a cabinet making course. And every student was going to build a nightstand. And get to take it home. Well, the idea that the taxpayers would spend maybe a hundred dollars on oak. Or a hundred and fifty on wallet or whatever and some hardware worth another twenty-five bucks and. Give it to the student when all those skills could have been learned on something much less expensive, right? And easier to to finance. Um, if 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 abused, you can imagine that a kid, like I think back to Ken Tower, our wood shop teacher at Flowing Wells, back when we called him Woodshop, right? Um, but he had students with him for four years that made entertainment centers and you name it, all kinds of pieces of furniture. Obviously, we can't take taxpayer dollars and send kids home with a fully furnished house, right? So um so there are fees for things that exceed um what is reasonable to give a student. So it's fine if a culinary student gets to eat a couple of cookies that they helped make. It's a whole different thing for the teacher to say, well, now that you know how to make cookies, help yourself. There's a flour and the sugar and the baking soda and the chocolate chips and make cookies and take them home with you. That's a whole different thing, so we have student fees to cover the cost, kind of require, uh, things that are going to end up being possessions of the students. There's gifts and donations. And then like Kathy mentioned earlier, our member districts have their whole MNO budget in addition. And our MNO budget is all based on CT enrollment, satellite and central. Um, we don't have that MNO. Budget that comes outside of that, that every other district gets. And then there's, finally, there's enterprise accounts. And so we have an enterprise account for cutting class, we have one for Little Lions, they're self-sufficient. And so the money generated by tuition for Little Lions. Turns around and pays for the salaries for the people that run Little Lions. And that money has to be kept separate from the other funding that we have, so, yeah.
Project search work that way?
No, uh-uh, no, project search, you wanna explain the.
Search is a um, we offer it as business and management, so it's a program. So we we generate um ADM for the time that they're in that and that would be two periods. The other four, because they're here all day, comes from the special education tuition monies. That um Ken and Tina will calculate and say you owe, you know, ten thousand dollars for the special education funding for Patty. So that, so it's, it's really special education funding from the districts and then we get um some CTED money. Um, because of the business and man and and management program.
So I think it's those two and maybe the vet program, do they charge?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The clinic.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the vet.
That, those clinics.
Vet clinics, uh, cosmetology, graphic design is a.
All my services business, right?
He he is, he's, he his enterprise might even be bigger than Cosmo just because he does a lot. For Flowing Wells as far as that, and he does for us, it's so wholesome, um, and those type of things, so he has a fair large interest.
Culinary.
A quick question, oh, sorry Kathy, go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying culinary, uh, does catering, that's it, go ahead, Cindy.
So I was just wondering if, so that Little Lions and um. Uh, what was the other one you mentioned? Oh, the cutting class, they they're also uh courses though, right? So do they generate the ADM component for their actual instruction on top of the enterprise funding?
Yes.
But the difference with the with the Little Lion is that is like, it's it's needed for the early channel um. Program to have in preschool, but the money that's in that um. That that passive when you go into it, that has to all be paid by tuition. That's the one that's probably the most strict as far as where the monies flow.
So the the money that comes in from ADM goes to the teachers. As well as the funds that come in from the tuition for the little ones?
Oh, no, so that's like, that's where it's really um strict with that, because all the monies that come from MNO has to be in the classroom. Learning where what happens in the preschool has to be because of a tuition, so um.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's a gift of public funds to be offering MNO money to whatever we put into the preschool. The snacks or anything like that, it has to be self-sustaining.
So all of our funding that comes in, our our CTED funding supports the early childhood program. And thankfully, right next door to the early childhood program, in the same building, is a preschool that we run separately. Totally separate funds, uh, self-sufficient, so that the early childhood students have. A lab with real life little human beings that they can practice the lessons that they prepared. And how to interact appropriately with young kids and all that.
Okay, great, yeah, that that makes sense, um, do the people who teach the. Uh, and I should know this, but I don't, sorry, the people who teach in the Little Lions. Are they also some of the instructors who teach the early education program? And and if so, do you have to subdivide their income?
They're not, they're full-time. Uh, Deborah and her assistants are full-time running the preschool. And Alyssa is full-time running the early childhood education program.
Okay, so that makes it much neater, thank you, that much better, thanks.
Last month, you have, you approved an increase to tuition for um the preschool and it's because of that. As cost goes up, you know, the tuition has to go up so it can be constant, that it stays self-sustaining.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or questions, because I think we are done with this part, except whatever questions you guys have. What were you hoping to to learn that you didn't learn, whatever hear about?
I thought we were gonna learn more about how our JTED generates its money, it's budget money.
Well, we've got some time. So.
So.
And Kurt?
Yes.
I I had a question, any progress on the state land trust? I I know they made some modifications, so it could help better support education, but. Uh, I don't know if there's any news on that front at all.
I don't know, Tina or.
So. Yeah, so we we aren't, we aren't eligible for state land trust, um, lands or anything like school districts are in terms of being to build on them. But I think you might, what you might be asking is the Prop one, two, three was a, was a proposition passed ten years ago. That that got um money out of the state land trust and put it into education and it it expires this summer. And so um the legis, if that's what you're referring to, the legislature was um had plans to renew that. Um, they they have not done that yet, they they, the latest was that they lumped it in, it's part of their plan, the legislature, legislative leadership, I should say. Um, we also, um, we're gonna codify the ES ESA expansion in. Um, that proposition as well and that caused a lot of um outcry from the education community. Um, and then questions about the legality, the single subject rule for Arizona, whether or not. Uh, ESA expansion and codifying that in as voted protected and the Prop one, two, three. Uh ESA expansion and codifying that in as voted protected and the Prop one, two, three, state land trust distributions, those are two separate issues. So can they even be on the same bill? So that that stalled all the discussion about Prop one, two, three. Uh 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 continuation. So again, all things can change at the legislature on a daily basis, but last I heard. There's no expectation that that's gonna be extended this year, they're just working now on the budget. And but but that being said, the way that it was written, if it doesn't get extended. Then all the land, the money does not come from the state land trust, but the legislature and the governor still have to um cover the cost. So it's going to be part of this budget negotiation and it's gonna be a cost to the state. Um, so it the districts won't lose the money, it just makes the the budget negotiations that much harder and balancing the budgets that much harder.
Thank you, Tina.
So to go back to Brenda, your question was how JTED generates funding, is that correct? Okay, so uh going back to what Kurt had presented before. There are the satellite enrollees, uh so the students. From each district that are in approved. JTED, CTED programs. They can generate up to point two five for one course, maximum point two five. So those numbers of students then go into. Uh, report that the state receives from the individual districts, they upload their enrollment directly. And then we're able to access that and calculate that. And then central campus enrollments, which could be in addition to the satellite, right? We saw the example of, was it Suzanne?
Suzanne.
Who was enrolled in a program at her high school. CTE, so she generated point two five and so that counts. Then after school, she reports to masterpieces and takes physical therapy tech in this room. She's generating an additional for physical therapy tech is probably point seven five, point five. So they're they're different. Our central campus programs could be a point two five or a point five. Or a point seven five depending on the program. So in the case of PTT, physical therapy tech, it's a point five. So then that generates funds. So there's the the sixteen hundred. For the point two five, her enrollment. And then she comes here and generates uh oh probably thirty-two hundred, let's say. So that's um, you know, four thousand uh eight hundred for Suzanne. That uh is reported to the state. And then um all of that for all of the students. So we have somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty thousand, twenty-eight thousand, thirty thousand students in satellite. And or central. So all of that is calculated and that creates the enrollment-based part of our budget. Then in addition to that, from Kurt's slide, is the property tax, the five cents.
Okay, five million.
The the hundred dollar assessed secondary valuation, which for all of the property in our service area of twelve thousand square miles. Is about five million. So that gets added and all of that combined. Is, I think we're at about forty million budget, is that correct, Ken, Tina?
Rounding it off.
Is a little less than that, um forty with carry forward.
With carry forward, so let's say it's maybe uh thirty.
Twenty as well.
It was twenty.
Thirty.
Five, but it's been creeping up because enrollment in satellite and central have been going up. So it's been creeping up. It used to be twenty some odd million and now it's more in the thirty some odd million. Um, as our enrollments have been increasing at the central campus, which has been at least. When you look at satellite campuses, it's been about at least a ten percent, is that correct Patty?
I'm gonna, so you're gonna approve tomorrow night final um hundred, um so I can tell you exactly how much it is. You give me a minute.
So she's gonna. You said about twenty-eight thousand in the city?
Uh, JTED, satellite and central enrollment has been going between twenty-six and thirty. Thousand, twenty-six thousand and thirty thousand. I'd have to get the exact number from Patty.
And how much was our central, about two thousand?
No, central have is now at this year thirty-one.
Okay.
Thirty-two.
That's that's.
Three thousand and two hundred. So it used to be that. Central accounted for ten percent of the total. Of enrollment and it's now. I think it's closer to fifteen percent.
Okay.
About that, so um as a portion of of that. Um, and overall budget. Probably say around thirty million with ten million approximately of carry forward. So the carry forward budget is unspent funds from member districts that get carried. Forward on their behalf, but then it counts as part of that current year budget.
Okay.
So forty million um would include maybe the eight to ten million of carry forward on behalf of the member districts. So then what we do is we take that that budget of all the enrollment and the taxes and um. And that is our budget for the year. But then what we do is we take the um. Enrollment of our member districts and we allocate back to them sixty-six percent. So we hold back a portion, but a majority of those funds. Then flow to the school districts, so then they combine that CTED funding allocation that we allocate back to them. Then they have their Perkins, their priority and their M and O. And they may have other grants besides that, but they take those four main sources. And then that's how they support the CTE programs. Um, for us, we have that one single source of funding. Uh. Based funding, which is uh our M and O and our CTED funding. And the prop- it it's all that, it's all one. Um, and then on top of that, there are grants we apply for and of course donations and such. Um, the budget building process is is different, like how do we decide? So the allocation is one thing, so we know, okay, what we have in our budget, we generated this X month. And but we know that we're giving most of it, allocating most of it back to support the member district programs. Which right now sixty-six percent goes back to them. So we're only holding back um uh less than half.
Every CTED in the state is different, but if I think it's still true that even gets Perkins. And at the expense of their member districts, correct?
For several of the member districts, not all.
Oh, okay.
I I don't think it's all, Tina might know for sure, but I think they get Fountain Hills. Maybe Apache Junction, but I think Mesa keeps their Perkins. I think Chandler keeps their Perkins.
And then they kind of run the CTE for Apache Junction.
On their behalf, but Brenda used to manage Aho when she worked for JTED.
Yeah.
Which might be a model we need to revisit. I was uh just looking at copies of the um. Uh, what do we call it? The compliance monitoring? And you're gonna get that full report tomorrow um in your packet for discussion as part of um the executive session. And um it's clear, some assistance is is needed. Um, but that's a different story for another time, but did that answer your question?
Yeah, it it answers my question that it's real important that the satellites keep their programs up. And keep their numbers up because that generates our funds.
That is exactly correct and yes.
I that feeds into my wanting to do the ambassador program. I think it's a win-win for all of us. If we continue that and get it where we can keep them participating because it's not so expensive. That's all I think.
Yeah.
And it that is a win-win for everybody.
I agree, and I would, but I would say over the last couple of years, definitely doesn't cover all of our expenses. But the growth of our students has helped us as well. I mean, where most of our programs do have or many of our programs do have weightless that that Michelle and Amanda are working through right now. Another reason I'm talking about the agents in the building or or something here. Because I mean, a lot of our programs have weightless now and so. We do what we can.
I have a question on, we don't get M and O. So how do we maintain our buildings?
Through, we we have that source, which is our enrollment funding. And our property tax and that is our budget. And so everything is from that, which is technically, that's our M and O. It's generated through our CTED enrollment. Um, and so it is M and O, it is um but it's it's our M and O. So our member districts, for example, they'll they generate based on their enrollments. Of just enrolling a student and they get their full-on ADM, their one point O. Um, as I recall, Tina and Ken, we're only getting, when we talk about an ADM. And if an ADM is sixty-four hundred in Arizona, a full-time high school student is worth. That generates sixty-four hundred. Um, in the state, CTEDs, when we talk about the generation of the point two five, the point seven five. That is not even at a one point O, that's still at eighty-eight, isn't it? Eighty-eight or eighty-five?
Um, well, a full-time high school student will generate sixty-four hundred, a full-time, which we don't have. But just to give you the idea, a full-time CTE student would generate sixty-seven hundred. But if we take that sixty-seven hundred and divide it by point two five. So each one of our our classes, oops, about twenty-five percent. Um, is sixteen seventy-five, I think we had that on the slide. So it it just depends, right? If we have um a a half, a point five um ADM, it'll be thirty-two hundred. But I I I guess um when I'm looking at this, yes, we get central. ADM and we get satellite ADM and then we send back to the district sixty-six percent. Of the satellite ADM, so I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. We gen- two two revenue streams for our M and O come in. And then we send part of that back out. Um, because it is, we still have to operate, you know, a district, we still have to have all of these. Other items plus, we do generate some district additional assistance, which is your capital. Um, which. You you we utilize to maintain equipment in buildings, but um we we don't. Have near as much as I would say or or funding available as I would say a regular district because we don't. We don't have an override available and we have chosen not to do bonds, so. Um, so there are multiple avenues coming in and it just depends on. How much each one of those students are taking, how many classes are taking and how much we send back out.
And so I believe it's been calculated that our central campus enrollment has increased. Between twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-four by thirty-four percent. Um, satellite enrollment has also increased.
For C for satellite.
For satellite.
For satellite.
Is it safe to say by ten percent or is it even more?
Well, yeah, I mean, so you could look.
As a combined group.
Um. I'm just actually looking at the document that I that I you guys will approve tomorrow night for their um the hundred day adjustment form. Looking at. Twenty-three, twenty-four, their ADM across all of the districts was um at eight tha- eight eight hundred fifty thousand. Um, as you know. Scratch off for me. So it was um sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight. Students, this year is sixteen thousand fifty-three students, so it's gone up by four hundred students. And that's for CTE reporting to us. They could have other students that are in satellites that that it isn't reporting to us. It's a knowledge block down to us.
Did all of them get their systems fixed so they can report accurately to?
Say that when we're having a third.
I thought last year we were having trouble with accurate reporting.
It was because of changes from how they were reporting, but yeah, it's that's been all cleared up.
And they report directly to ADE. And so I I think it would be safe to say that in the same period that we grew by thirty-four percent. Satellite enrollment has also grown over that period by at least ten percent or more. That we're growing, but they're growing too, which means when you look at a flat number of high school students. In uh in the Tucson Metro or JTED delivery, the enrollment is flat. But the percent of CTE participation is is phenomenally growing. Um, by leaps and bounds, so um there is uh increases. And I think that also is why that ten million came as maybe a surprise to the legislature. About the freshman enrollment is just enrollment has been increasing.
And the number that gave you does not include the freshmen, because this is only ones that are reporting for ADM.
Now, you're reporting on that tomorrow night, you said. Is there a way on board book that we get that copy that I'm not aware of?
But I can show you when I'm looking.
Okay.
I'm I'm gonna, so it should be on there.
If you could show me, I'll get them, because I don't get the copies before. For some reason I can't.
So Chris might need to help us with that because I haven't known the board book, but but if you can pull up your board book, I can look at it.
All right.
You know, um if if I can just add com- a comment to what you just said Kathy, it's, I didn't think of it this way until you said it. Yes, they might be increased freshman funding, but the overall ADM is down. Right? So is it truly a net cost to the general fund? Because if ADM didn't go up year over year, then the drag on on the state general fund shouldn't be there. And now I know it it costs more, uh the the weight factor for a CTE student is one point three three nine, but yet we, that's not one, that's not at one point O. FTE, so I'm just in my head doing some simple math and I. Definitely going back to what Cindy mentioned earlier in the in the in the presentation. Um, and I think that's very disingenuous for them to say that that caused a drain on. Uh, anyway, just thinking out loud that I don't, I don't know as if that's truly a negative to the state fund, state general fund.
Yeah, because it would be offset by.
Right. Yeah, yeah, the the general, the 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 regular K twelve ADM, if it's. If it's been flat and they had a uh uh every year they have a an inflation factor increase, so. Uh, you take that in consideration and then the ten million, it just it doesn't add up to me in my head.
So I know our lobbyist firm is looking into that ten million. Uh, what I'm not a hundred percent sure of is is that the total freshman funding. Uh, expense or is that the surprise part? Uh, well, they had budgeted five million, but it actually was fifteen million, so they're ten million short. Or didn't count on that ten million, or are they just pointing out? That they need to find ten million and they forgot that they needed to budget for it. So I don't know if you can answer any of that Tina, or if we're going to hear about that from our lobbyists later in the week, but. Um, I I wasn't sure about that that amount, where that came from.
So because it's fairly new, the freshman funding, um it and because they don't get funded until they persist to their junior year. Last year was the first year they got funded. It it's uh my guess is it's an unexpected number that they. They didn't budget as much as they actually needed to, um and that's why they have it listed as it's kind of a, it was an unknown that's adding to. Um, their bottom line.
Or could it be they're using it to politicize the um focus. Away from ESA in the budget impact. And they know freshman funding is very popular and very much a popular thing on both sides of the aisle that. They're they're kind of using that to distract um and put something popular in what might not be. Um, and put something popular in what might not be a popular. Option when you're talking about ESA or budget impact. I I'm just wondering, that might be personal opinion.
Well, no, it, I mean, it's hard to predict what goes through these guys' mind, but it sounds like you could have, this, that's a realistic option.
As we know, they, as we found out, the idea of funding freshmen in career and technical ed, C Ted programs is popular, very popular. Other questions?
How do you expect us to retain all of what we just heard today?
Take seven times on average to hear new information. And and learn it and incorporate it, so seven different presentations of the same thing. But speaking of that, one thing I would like for you all is just to think about. What part three might be, what you would like to talk about or have presented. Part three of these workshops.
Maybe our actual budget, so we can see where we're spending. Money, how much various programs cost and. Just a breakdown in everything we spend.
And the P and L, what it is.
Yeah.
Well, we kind of present that anyways, and if you want to discuss that further on Tues- tomorrow night. Um, I can show you or maybe I can tweak it a little bit, but. W- we definitely are presenting the actual expenditures. And then the revenue is the budget side, right? Um. Because we're, we're not concerned on revenue and I know that I've talked about that before where that just doesn't make sense to a lot of us. But our generated revenue is our budget. And so if we automatically have. You know, our budget minus expenditures gives us a budget balance, you can consider that as your, uh, net income. In the real world. The difference is, is we might not see the revenue, um, right away because of tax collections and whatnot. Does that make sense? Not really. Um, but yeah, we can definitely look at that tomorrow, but we, we are, we are showing. Um, depending on how you look at it, we are showing, um, net revenue. I mean, net, net income, excuse me.
I have a question, I think it relates to finances, is the. Ste- Kathy, you and your staff did an amazing job taking those thousand young people who wanted to sign up. Originally, we didn't have places for them. But you found places and I want to compliment all of you, but. I understand that there are still several hundred that couldn't find a spot and I'm wondering next year. Enrollment, what do we do? How are we planning? To adapt to that or accommodate that and, um. I think it comes down to money. To a large degree is, if that's, maybe that's a misconception, but I'd, I'd like to. I'd like to talk about that and, uh, some more.
Absolutely, um, and in fact, it's on, um, it's proposed to be discussed. In executive session tomorrow, um, related to upcoming goals, superintendent goals. But some things that are being done is first of all, to make sure the students who we enroll. Are the best match for the program. So in other words, every single seat that's taken up by students in physical therapy tech. They know what the program is, they have, understand the requirement of the time. They understand how it'll impact their, their full day schedule. Uh, they have an interest in the area, so it's a, uh, changes that are being, um. Proposed to really have that best fit, that best match of student to program. So that would be through an orientation process that would be required. That before they even are fully committed and taking a seat. That they and their family have attended an information session and they know what they're getting into, so that's part of it. But then also looking at how we do the pre-enrollment is simply a, uh. First come, first served, website opens, online enrollment opens at three PM on January twenty seven. And if you're at a computer and you're lucky enough to have a school that has set up a system where you can get to a computer. And go on to that link and right at three o'clock, you press the button and you're in and then you sign up. We have classes filling in five minutes. And some kids, we heard, some young people had, didn't have access to a computer, they didn't, couldn't get to a lab. They, you know, they, there are all these things that were some inequities in how we do it. So Patty's been working with the student services team to, uh, develop a lottery system. So first and foremost would be, they know the program they want to be in, they know what they're getting into. Before they take that seat up. And then also looking at how can we do a fair lottery? Where all of the qualified and interested students. Then are put into the program based on a lottery instead of who had the easiest access to a computer. On that certain day at that certain time. We had a young person that was, uh, in the hospital, it could, you know, things like that, just. So a lottery system would enable more of a fair thing. And then the other is projecting. Through, um, surveys, getting a handle on what the. Projected needs would be, and if we know we are going to have a record number of. Healthcare fundamentals, which is that gateway course, then we know we need to look at how we can do that. The, we have been so lucky and so fortunate in finding faculty. Um, and our team, kudos to Patty and our, our. Uh, administrators for helping with that, the innovation Kurt and Merrill with the teacher interns. Where I can, I'm pretty close to believing, hearing that we're guaranteeing all the interns, all four jobs, like they're in demand. And they have places either with us, central or satellite. And so innovative programs like that. And then it will be limited by facility, but also looking at how we can be more creative in sharing space. And using space and, um, to answer. Um, to answer your question, Wayne, um, we're looking at a number of different things to, to alleviate. Uh, the waitlist for next year, because we know if a student doesn't get in, in high school, that chances are. They might not get, uh, get training in that area. We're not seeing great numbers go into Pima Community College when they leave us, for whatever reason, um. That, that we need to look at, and we're also looking at more university partnerships. Universities are seeing us now as a feeder more so than they ever have before. So we're looking at how they can, they can help us out as well. Alex.
Well, I have a comment about that and. Pima College is going to do the same thing. They, they don't have a mechanism to deal with the influx. Of people that have to register on a date for, for program. And I can see where with community colleges, it's probably, probably harder on them. Because they look at such a, a broader pool of, of students. That is both metropolitan and rural. So. Maybe they'll figure it out and we can use. But I, I, it's, it's not something that is exclusive to us, because their. Their enrollment process is a disaster. It makes University of Arizona enrollment look like a Sunday school, a big thing. And, uh, this is exactly the same thing that we're faced with. Is how do we deal with people that don't have immediate access to computers? So. I don't know if, if there is an answer out there somewhere, but. I, I think that we're in, in, in good company with Pima College. Whether we like it or not.
Good job, Kurt. Yeah, thank you, Kurt, thank you, Patty. Thank you, Tina and Ken.
Thank you all.
Thanks, lots of info, my head is full.
Thank you, guys.
And Wade and Cindy, I have bucket hats for you that I'll bring tomorrow or we'll get them. Other, J Ted bucket hats.
Excellent.
And a navy.
I, I can't wait.
I'll see you tomorrow. Enjoy the lunch.
Dr. Pete, would you like to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I'm, we adjourn and with, uh, great gratitude, Kurt and to all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, before I take. All right, there's lunch.
I learned things too. Always fun.
Me too.